This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 1st, 2022. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format with the ability of the public to connect virtually using the GoToMeeting access information found on our website. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel? Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Christel?
Here.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next, we have a presentation by one of our favorite developers in town, Lexington Homes, about their Lexington Trace Unit Number Two and Number Three that are on the agenda tonight for approval. Welcome. Would you like to go to the podium, please? And as John Davis used to say, give us your story.
Green light. Good evening. My name is Nate Weinsma. I'm with Lexington Homes here tonight to present plans on two properties that we are referring to as Lexington Trace Units Two and Three. The first property, and I'll, what I'd like to do is just kind of briefly review both parcels together. They're both tied with Unit One and both kind of have the same implications, same product type. So I'll kind of review both briefly. Unit Two, as we refer to it, is, some of you may know as the McConaughey Property. It is a parcel of land that fronts Route 59, just north of Estes, and is contiguous to Lexington Trace, a new street and new part of that development, Bremen Court. It is a, it was previously a home on that property that was removed years ago. The access was removed. So if you drive by, it's a wooded site. Hard to see anything but trees there. If you're on Bremen Court as part of Lexington Trace, it's the north side of Bremen, which if you've been out there, is a wetland area and a detention basin that was built as part of Lexington Trace along the immediate north side of the road. At the bulb of the cul-de-sac is where we would propose to access a new motor court with two six-unit buildings, one facing 59, Route 59, and one facing west to the wetland. The majority of the site, over half of the site, will be preserved primarily as delineated wetland. The areas that will be built upon, we have, through work with staff, I think some of the enhancements that have been made specific to this unit are apparent on the landscape plan, which is on the screen now. As you can see, most of the west side of the property is all wetland. A shaded area is a buffer of redeveloped, kind of buffer area and landscaping that will be added along the perimeter of the wetland, just on the east side of the wetland. We've also taken steps since the last, since the preliminary plans that you all saw a few months back to add some fence screening and landscaping along the north property line where it transitions to commercial property, and heavy landscaping, mostly evergreen, along the Route 59 right-of-way to screen the front of that building. And this is consistent with what you would see for landscaping. So on the south side of Bremen Court, the existing building there that faces Route 59. The only other enhancement or change that was really made to this would be apparent on the engineering plans where we've extended the water to the far northeast corner of this site to provide for future extension to the north for those undeveloped commercial properties between Butterfield Road and the McConaughey Parcel. Architecturally, I think this is consistent with what you saw in the preliminary. There may have been a few enhancements made, primarily that you would see on the, the building facing Route 59, as I'll point out, on Unit Three as well. There's a few key buildings that are visible from 59. That building will have an enhanced elevation with added masonry. These, these, all of the buildings I'm going to show you in the townhomes I'm going to show you tonight will have and do have the standard box bay elevation on the side, as you see. That's a standard on every, the end unit of every building. So we have three different color variations, all consistent in material, in style, and scale to Unit One. So no differentiation between what's there today and what will be built as parts of Unit Two and Three. Feel free to stop me anytime if there's something specific to one of these properties you'd like me to point out. If not, Unit Three is the larger of the two parcels. This is up at Route 59, or I'm sorry, Butterfield Road, and the entrance to Lexington Trace, which is Barkley, Barkley Avenue. So this would be the southwest corner of Barkley 59. What exists there today is a, an older home that was used as an office and a number of outbuildings that are home to multiple tenants, carpentry contractor, landscape contractors and the like. This property will be accessed from Barkley, although we will have two buildings that are shown on the plan as Buildings 24 and 25, facing Butterfield Road. Again, that's labeled on the plan as the enhanced elevations. So anything kind of facing outward, whether it's to Butterfield, or in this case, to the church to the south, those will have enhanced elevations. We've got a continuous, kind of circular connecting road that accesses Barkley in two places, a total of six buildings, each building containing six units for a total of 36 here. Some of the changes that were made from the preliminary that you originally saw would not be really discernible. A few engineering-type changes with the roadways upon staff recommendation. Open space enhancements, including in the landscape plan, I can point out a couple of additions, and one is a hardscape element, which would be an arbor seating area kind of in the central court. And that will be consistent in style, smaller scale, but consistent style with the arbor that you would see overlooking the wetlands on Barkley today. We've also taken steps to increase the pathway and sidewalk circulation. This exhibit kind of demonstrates between paths, sidewalks, existing sidewalks, and to be built, how everything interconnects between Lexington Trace, Butterfield Road, Route 59, and then Units Two and Three to be added. So there were some changes there in the, in the plan from when you last saw it, but for the most part, pretty consistent with our preliminary plan as we've moved forward through final planning. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. That was very comprehensive. Any questions from the council? My understanding, someone told me that all of the Lexington developments have the Lexington name because you're proud of your product. Is that true?
Well, it's, it's true for the most part. We do stray away from the Lexington name sometimes, but that was an interesting, it's an interesting point because I was at a hearing once with a project about a year ago, and it was not very popular with the neighbors, or at least the plan we had proposed at that time. And we were compromising and making changes. And one of the neighbors said, you know, I know we're being kind of rough on you, but we know when we see your communities and you use the name Lexington, we've got a builder who's proud of what they're doing and is, is okay with being tied to those communities well after they're built. And, and I think for the most part, most of our communities, they age well, they mature well. We are proud to go back to them 20, 30, 40 years later. And the predecessor to this Lexington Homes was Concord Homes. And we did the same thing there. We've got a lot of Concord communities in, in Chicago, in the city of and around Chicago, that we're still very proud of those communities and try to do a good job.
That's appreciated. I drove through there just yesterday showing a friend, and it looks very, very nice. Nice materials, nice layout, nice landscaping, nice finish on everything. And it's full, right? Pretty much?
It's sold out.
We've got final occupancy on all the buildings that exist, right?
Pretty close, yeah. Thank you.
That's impressive. Ahead of schedule, I presume?
Yes.
Yeah. That's always good.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you in our community.
Thank you.
Any other comments? You're free.
All right. Thank you.
Ron, did you have, you had additional backup that you wanted to point out tonight for this, for these two items, Items D and E on the agenda? Would you like to do that right now? Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to clarify regarding the additional exhibits before you at your podium. That has to do with the ordinances and specifically exhibits to those ordinance pertaining to the Lexington Trace, Unit Two and Three. A complete revised ordinance with, the ordinance has not changed, but exhibits are all inclusive within that ordinance. So just for clarification purposes, yeah, what's before you is the ordinance as drafted, no change to that, but including the attachments that are referenced within the ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Take a quick look at that. All right. Very good. We'll move on then to citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. I believe there is some confusion on Item Number G. I think the confusion is around the qualifications in function of the city treasurer. There is no CPA requirement. There is no accounting degree requirement. In fact, all you have to be is a registered voter, a citizen of Warrenville, because this is a political post, an elected post. It's a fact that Alderman Goodman's father ran for the city treasurer's position. He's not an accountant. He's a scientist. But what is the function of the city treasurer? What is the city treasurer doing? I think it can be easiest by describing the city treasurer is the eyes of the citizens. He is there to watch the financial movement of the taxes and the spending. Bob Johnson was our longest city treasurer over 30 years. And we can see one action that he took that helped the citizens of Warrenville. About 20-some years ago, City of Warrenville stated that they needed to raise taxes in order to pay for a road plan. Bob Johnson coordinated with the Warrenville Chamber of Commerce, created a road committee co-chaired by Bob Johnson and Ned Gilbranson from the Chamber of Commerce. Their committee, on reviewing the financial documents, the City of Warrenville found not one plan, but two plans to pay for the road programs without raising taxes. As the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, a sustainable democracy needs checks and balances. When you appoint the city treasurer, instead of voting for the city treasurer, you are removing bricks from the foundation of democracy. I suggest, unlike the previous and last election, instead of not identifying that that treasurer was not going to run, do what was done 20 years ago. Weekly announce individuals that have purchased or picked up packets to run for the various offices. This will allow the citizens, the electorate, to determine that there are offices that need to be filled. That is the basis of democracy.
Thank you, Bob. We will move on to official staff comments, beginning with the mayor. I have several things this evening. First of all, I have a statement concerning our city administrator. The city is aware of the unfortunate circumstances regarding the misdemeanor charge against John Cokely, Warrenville City Administrator. Although the alleged incident occurred during non-work time, the city is taking this matter very seriously, given Mr. Cokely's leadership position with the city. Upon hearing of his arrest on July 24th, the city immediately placed Mr. Cokely on administrative leave. In order to ensure that the city's operations were not interrupted, I temporarily appointed Assistant City Administrator Christina White to serve as Acting City Administrator. I want to emphasize that the inquiry and investigation into the situation is still ongoing, and the police department will continue to assist the prosecutor's office as the case moves forward. This is a very difficult situation. It is the city's responsibility to handle it with due diligence, sensitivity, and integrity. I can assure you that the city, including Acting Administrator White and all the city staff, will continue to provide the excellent services you have all come to expect. Also, this evening, I'd like to announce that National Night Out is coming tomorrow night at Serdy Park from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. This event is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Take this moment to celebrate with the police department, myself, and the community businesses the spirit, successes, and cooperative determination it takes to keep our growing city neighborhoods safe for everyone. And the safest communities are the ones that have a good relationship between the law enforcement and the citizens. So come on out. It's always a lot of fun. There's a lot of free stuff, a lot of demonstrations, a lot of stuff for the kids. The kids have a blast. And the weather's going to be nice, I guarantee it. Did I just say that? Summer Days is coming up this weekend also, August 5th and 6th across the street. Always a lot of fun. Enjoy live music, beer, wine, delicious food, booths, and fun for the entire family. Another low-budget, in-town opportunity to have some fun with your family. So do, do join us for that. You won't regret it. If you're coming to the planned commission public hearing on Thursday evening, please be advised that the City Hall parking lot on Stafford Place will be closed in order to set up for the Summer Days stage in large tent. So there will be no parking over there. You can have limited parking availability on Stafford Place. You can also park down on Manning Avenue and walk up the side of the building to Stafford Entrance. So just a little housekeeping there. And finally, if you've looked around town, you've seen the curb appeal award signs out for Warrenville and Bloom. Lots of them out, lots of beautiful front yards, lots of effort on part of the citizens to make their yards look good, and by extension, our community. So thank you for Warrenville and Bloom. Those signs are coveted. People, if they don't get them every year, and they've worked hard for them, they sure make Warrenville and Bloom know about that. Where's my sign? So that's a neat thing for the city. And that's all I have this evening. Clerk? Okay. Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I have a couple of announcements. There have been some resources that have been made available recently at the federal level that I just wanted to make sure everybody knows about and that the city is publicizing for our residents. First is the new 988 emergency number for mental health services. It's the new national number for the existing suicide prevention hotline, but there will be additional resources available. It's, it should be an easy number to remember. I know we all know 911, so hopefully in the future, we'll all also know 988 for those kinds of situations. Secondly, I think due to funds from the bipartisan infrastructure bill, the federal government has launched heat.gov, which has the latest heat watch information. This is going to be a hot week, so this might be relevant for us out there. It'll tell you the location of cooling centers near you, tips and help information to deal with the heat, steps to take in emergencies, and things like that. So heat.gov and 988, both pretty easy to remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? One other thing I wanted to mention concerning Item F on our agenda tonight. Commonwealth Edison is providing us with $10,000 towards the Trailhead, maybe to make up for all the delays that they incurred for us. Oh, wait, I was just thinking. At any rate, we're about to start that project right after Summer Days. So you'll see some changes across the way that'll be very nice. There are signs out there right now if you want to see what's going to happen. But the whole idea is to enhance the experience of people coming through, thousands who come through a day, come through Warrenville. They'll know they're in Warrenville. They'll have a restroom. They have a place to look at flowers. There'll be, not only that, there's a memorial for the Prairie Path that's going to be included in that. So it's going to be very, very nice. It'll be a nice spot for our town. Construction will begin again after Summer Days. It may take some time, as I understand it, some of the materials are hard to come by, if you can believe that, these days, supply chain issues even for new buildings. But it will be started. Okay. City Administrator?
No comment this evening.
Thank you. And City Attorney? Very good. Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the August 1st, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion? Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to remove Item 6C.
6C?
And Alderman Berry will make that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion?
C as in there? Okay, thank you.
Motioner agrees.
Okay. Second or agree? Okay. So we have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening as amended. May I have a roll call, please? Or no, we can do it all, all in favor? Do we need a roll call for that? Voice vote. That's what I thought. So used to the pandemic stuff. I'm still making the transition. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing not all. The motion is approved. Thank you. We have several sets of minutes that need to be approved also. Alderman Widener?
Mayor, I'd prefer that someone else move to approve these since I was absent for one of the meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would like to make the motion. Alderman Goodman?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting. Should we have a separate motion for the other one? Yeah.
Second.
You can do them.
Not if, not if he wants to abstain from one.
I didn't feel it was necessary to abstain. I just didn't feel it was in the best interest for me.
I can still read the minutes and...
I misunderstood him, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, then. In addition, I will amend my motion to add to approve the minutes of the July 25th, 2022 Public Safety and Finance Meeting, and approve the minutes of the July 25th, 2022 City Council Closed Session Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lockett. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing not all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. The agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance O2022-25, establishing a revised schedule of job classification and authorized strength. B, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance O2022-26, amending city co-title three, chapter four regarding solicitors and peddler. D, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance O2022-28, approving a special use permit for a planned unit development, certain modifications from the Warrenville zoning ordinance, and a final plat of subdivision for Lexington Trace Townhome Subdivision Unit Two, south of Butterfield Road, west of Route 59, north of Bremen Court. E, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance O2022-29, approving a rezoning, special use permit for a planned unit development, certain modifications and variations from the Warrenville zoning ordinance and the Warrenville stormwater regulations, and a final plat of subdivision for Lexington Trace Townhome Subdivision Number Three, southwest corner of Butterfield Road and Barkley Avenue. F, Accept Staff Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-44, approving receipt of 2022 ComEd Green Region Program grant funds and expenditure of matching funds for the Trailhead Project. G, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-45, initiating the placement of a public question on a ballot asking to change the, for the city treasurer from an elected to an appointed position. H, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-46, approving a cable franchise agreement with Comcast Cable for a 10-year term expiring in 2032. I, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-47, authorizing a temporary 18-month suspension of provision of electricity through the, an electric aggregation contract pursuant to the electric aggregation program. J, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation, Pass Resolution R2022-48, approving a contract expansion with Closed Circuit Innovations Incorporated for a one-year period expiring June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $35,904. K, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-49, approving the government agency agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for the maintenance and installation of nine license plate recognition cameras. L, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held on July 21st, 2022. M, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to July 27th, 2022 in the amount of $64,481.75, and N, Authorized Expenditures for Invoices Due On or Before August 15th, 2022 in the amount of $392,220. amount of $392,220.74. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will return to item 6C. Alderman Berry, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2022-27, approving a temporary use permit for our Evallette Eve two-year anniversary celebration.
Second. Second by Alderman Davlos. Discussion? Alderman Goodman?
I won't take up a lot of your time, but I restate my previously known position that business owners who state that public health laws don't apply to them should not be granted permits like this.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Let's do another roll call then, please.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Would someone like to make motion for 7A, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-50, expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds of one or more obligations to be issued by the city of Warrenville, DuPage County, Illinois.
Second.
Second. Okay. Second, Alderman Goodman. Finance Director Dollstrand, could you give us just a little background for the public on what this means?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed resolution that would allow us to reimburse ourselves for capital expenditures that we may make before we issue a potential bond issue at the beginning of 2023. And this is all related to the potential infrastructure improvements we would make out in District Number 4. It's being done tonight as a regular agenda item so that the actual vote can be determined instead of being a part of the consent agenda.
Okay. And this is not a commitment to borrow money?
Correct. It is not a commitment to do it, nor is it a requirement to reimburse ourselves. It just allows us the ability to do, to do that if the city council so decides.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Finance Director? Alderman Goodman?
Not a question, just a comment. If we have expenses towards any of the reimbursable costs between now and the time when the financing closes, this resolution allows us to reimburse ourself once that financing has closed. So borrowing all of the money now and paying interest on it until we need it is not the most fiscally responsible way to do this. So having this reimbursement resolution in effect will save the city and the taxpayers money.
Thank you. And that was a recommendation from the work group that looked at this. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Could a roll call, please?
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Motion carries. We have nothing under new business. We do, however, have the need for a closed session this evening, so if I could have the representation, please, Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5ILCS 120/2, paren C, paren S1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, to determine its validity.
Second.
Second. Second by Alderman Goodman again. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. We're entering into closed session. We will not be conducting any business subsequent to our closed session, so you're free to go home and plan to attend National Night Out and Summer Days. Don't forget.
This conference is no longer being recorded.